That our brief public announcement before we begin. In case of emergency, could everyone please exit the chamber? Proceed down the right-hand side of the aisle. Exit at the ground floor to allow for emergency personnel to enter. We also have a sign-up sheet at the podium. Anyone wishing to address the Council's Public Speaking portion of the meeting, please sign up at the door. And we're just going to change the agenda a little bit. We're going to have the Public Speaking before we have the Majority and Minority speeches. Because we're going to bring the podium around so they can talk out to the audience. Okay? So one minute when she'll be all here. Okay, thank you. I'd like to declare this meeting now duly open. Please stand. My delegation is to declare the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment. Thank you. Please be seated. Please have a roll call.
Alderman Eckert?
Here.
Alderman Coop?
Here.
Alderman Mills?
Here.
Alderman Dawson?
Here.
Alderman Carey?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Mills?
Here.
Alderman Chabot?
Here.
Alderman Brown?
Here.
Thank you. We have four. I get a motion to dispense with the meaning of the General Bill.
Motion.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is adopted, nine zero. I get a motion to dispense with the meaning of the General Bill.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is adopted, nine zero. We will now enter into the Public Speaking portion of the meeting. Did you get the sign-up sheet?
Yep.
Okay. So just for your information, you know, the Council cannot engage in debate. You know, so please give your name and address and address your concerns to the Chair. Thank you very much. First speaker, please. Steve Noble.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I want to speak on a few couple of issues very quickly. I know that you have a lot of business to attend to this evening. And I would like to just start by saying an early thank you. I know that during the Finance Committee meeting held last evening, you unanimously endorsed the settlement for Chris Ray. It's been something that we've been working on since I took office. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your support in this matter. The City of Kingston and the Ray family have been on a very long road. It's been a road that I wanted to, you know, really come to an end. And it's something that I believe is in the best interest of the city. I'd like to thank my co-presiding Council, Kevin Bryant, for his excellent negotiating skills. And I believe really truly represented the city and our taxpayers to the best of our ability. And I believe that we've come up with a very fair settlement. And so I hope this evening we will have all of your support in helping to put this matter behind us and allowing Mr. Ray to come back to work. He will be starting and we're able to pass this this evening on March 7th. Will be his first day back to work as Assistant Fire Chief for the City of Kingston Fire Department. I look forward to integrating him back into our fire department and using his skills and expertise to help us as a city be able to tackle some of the challenges that we have ahead in our fire department as we move forward. So again, I want to say thank you. And I want to thank everyone involved in this process as it has been a very difficult time for the city. And I do appreciate the work of everyone involved. I would also like to just spend a few moments talking about sales tax. I know I stood in front of you just a short time ago and encouraged you to adopt, which you did, and I appreciate the cohesive message that we sent to the County Executive and to the County Legislature that this sales tax issue is critical to the City of Kingston. I believe our message was heard loud and clear. And I think that that message has resonated with many, both at the county level and here amongst our city. Speaking to many taxpayers, they too have now, I think, recognized what the city has done to both consolidate departments, share services, and unfortunately cut staff over the last 10 years to still be able to keep our taxes as low as we can to meet the tax cap and to really be able to plan for our future. And so many of you have had a hand in that over the last few years. And so I just want to say thank you for all of that. But I do want to also provide you that because of that message that we've delivered cohesively, I believe that the County Executive in particular has recognized that. And just as at 4:30 this afternoon, I received a letter from him indicating not only his willingness to work with us hand-in-hand for shared services and helping to bring us and others all around the same table to be able to talk about how we can work better together and how we can coordinate our services, how we can share our services, and how we can consolidate our services both internally, externally, and with all of our neighbors. And I think that that's very exciting. And he has said he will host this meeting in the next 30 days, which is just what I called for. And I'm very excited to be able to have that occurring here. And one other very interesting piece of this is that the County Executive stated in his letter that he would like to support the continuation of our sales tax agreement. And I think that that is a very big step for the County Executive, for the first time to publicly say that he will be supporting the continuation of our sales tax. It's still undefined how long the sales tax agreement, but I believe what is important to us is that, you know, for us in the City of Kingston, short-term is five years, long-term 10 years. I think if we can focus on the short-term right now, I think that that's good for the city, it's good for our taxpayers. And it does give us time, the next four or five years, to really not only develop and implement some of the cost savings and innovative programs that we want to look forward to doing. These things, as we know all the time, it takes time to negotiate with our unions, it takes time to bring together some of our various stakeholders from the towns and the city. And so extended renewed sales tax agreement that keeps our percentages the same is a good thing for the City of Kingston. And so I'm very excited about that. And now I think our attention needs to turn to the Ulster County Legislature. And so I ask each of you to stand with me as we go to the Legislature and ask for them to take up our sales tax proposal that we sent them last week and to make sure that that comes to the floor of the Legislature and that we're able to go ahead and get that passed. And then work with the County Executive to really define a long-term plan of how we're going to make sure that we can stay, you know, a great city and continue to deliver the services that we need. And so with that, I again want to say thank you, and I want to thank each of you for your hard work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jean Jacobs. Good evening. My name is Jean Jacobs. I live at 139 Wall Street, Kingston, New York. Good evening, Alderman-at-Large, James Noble, members of the Common Council. I am a lifelong resident here in the City of Kingston. I take great pride in my community. I raised all my children here, and my feet are still grounded. The reason for me speaking before you this evening has to do with animal control. If all of you don't recognize me as an animal advocate, I think the majority of you know what I accomplished in the community over the course of time. There's thousands of me in social... I'm one person standing before you this evening, but the animal advocacy kingdom is growing beyond leaps and bounds. And there are many that are saving them on a day-to-day basis. There is a resolution this evening, I understand, that was coming before the Common Council with a budget modification of... I'm not going to read it in respect for the time, the entire, but $97,241 has been requested by the Chief of Police to reflect expected savings from the anticipated consolidation of animal control services. I worked with Adam Saunders, I worked with Marie Post for nine years. I know what it costs. I know that resources, financial resources, are not readily available to resource animal advocacy. Michael Heine, our County Executive a year ago, passed the legislation for the Animal Response Plan in the county. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with it, but I highly recommend you educate yourself because there's a provision in there that takes care of the feral cat population. And as the former Chairman of the City of Kingston Cat Task Force, appointed by James Noble, former Mayor, I worked diligently with a team for over a year creating a plan that was presented to the Common Council four years ago in our area. Nothing ever became of it because Marie Post resigned in December of 2010, and we never reinstated the program, ladies and gentlemen. So quite frankly, for four years, there's never been a program. Sean McGarry was just the dog warden. He was not the cat warden, which he had been for years, working with me diligently, and Merrill Bornstein and many others. So I stand before you this evening in hopes that you begin to recognize the importance of unity and partnering and shared services with the Ulster County, SPCA, the city, and the county. I think we can save money and save lives. This is critical. How do we teach our children? You have wonderful laws now that are coming before the society, and they're respecting the animals many more now than previously. And that's through the efforts of people like me and millions of others that are stepping up and making a difference in their lives. So I urge all of you to recognize you just cannot just say, "We're going to save this amount of money." You don't know what the expense is going to be long range. So I spoke before the Legislature in the summer about the animal abuse registry and that cast. So I think we have a voice, and I urge all of you to take ownership. I can go into all your wards, and I'll end with this, I can go into all your wards right now. I can bring in tracts, 16 to 20 of them, TNR, and I can track Debbie's ward, Mary Ann's ward, and I will take them over to the SPCA, which used to be a cost of over $120 regardless of feral or abandoned. It is now free. Free! Because of the grant that Michael Heine secured with the Ulster County SPCA and the Woodstock Feral Cat Project. I can do this in the City of Kingston with a task force. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you begin to recognize the importance and educate and read the plan that's currently in the county and work with the Ulster County SPCA. That is paramount. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rob Walters.
Good evening, Mr. President. Robert Walters, Department of Labor, Plough Road, Kingston. Speaking on my own behalf tonight, following up on my remarks last month before the Ulster County Legislature. That talk is available, and I suggested that the Legislature pass a memorializing resolution declaring Indian Point to the Commonwealth. An imminent threat to public health is seeking a call for immediate closure. This is something that Governor Cuomo's been working on. My reasoning for this was that he's just one guy, you know, he's the governor, and we can have 180,000 people back him up on that in my home away. I gave a few reasons why Indian Point should close down. It has no evacuation plan, it's exceeded its design lifetime, its license is definitely expired. They have no plan. They can have an evacuation plan, but because of the logistics, impossible. There's no plan of disposing. Baltimore's clear waste, and it's been sitting on site for four years. One thing I left out was that according to these environmental groups that recently ganged together and come on board the city, they're for sea floods and bitter water, Sierra floods. And I don't know where this number comes from, but the official number from these environmental groups is that when Indian Point is operating correctly, it causes 4,000 New York deaths a year. I thought that was an interesting statistic because now that it has this uncontrolled leak into the Hudson River, how many more people are going to die from it? This might be said as a thyroid cancer cluster in the areas around Indian Point. And now that it's leaking all these materials into our river, some of it's going to come up here, wash upon the shores of the city. And while the Legislature might sooner or later go along with such a resolution, the local municipalities can also pass similar resolutions in similar ways to what we've been doing to the Polk and Piper. So I think it's a good tactic because it would really back the governor's interest to close down this nuclear power plant and in turn inspire other areas around the country and around the world to close down their nuclear power plants. As you can see, Fukushima, it's still uncontrolled, chain action going on there, believing the Pacific. The high radiation, the East Coast, a million clicks per minute at times. So I'll be speaking for the Duchess Legislature next week, offering similar arguments. And I just hope we consider that. It's something Kingston could do, and the Common Council should take ownership on that issue. It's very important. What happens if Indian Point melts down? They don't have a plan for dealing with that either. If my driver's license expired, and I tried to drive down Broadway, they'd throw me in jail. Now, this is a nuclear power plant, it's a lot more dangerous than normal. And they're operating without a license. And it's very dangerous. I have to have car insurance if I run someone over. They don't have insurance, you know. If Indian Point melts down, it's our problem. If you look at Japan, and see how they... How much their nuclear power companies have stepped up to the plate and paid for all the damage and deal with all of that. Senator Schumer says we need another plan for the electricity before we shut it down. He also says it never should have been put there in the first place. I see China putting solar panels on all the roads. They have big initiatives in China and Russia and other countries to really just turn the whole grid solar. So we could do that here, we have actually solar manufacturing facilities right outside in Tech City, in Fisherville. So that's the solution. And I hope anyone stays up on this issue, it's pretty important, and keeps on top of this leak in Indian Point. And I hope one day they'll consider such a resolution as both the Russian and the County Legislature and other counties around this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Ellen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Preston. My name is Ellen DeFalco. I live at 66 Glen Street in the City of Kingston. Aldermen, members of the public and the press. I'm here once again to remind you that you are the watchdogs of our city finances and budget. It would be fiscally irresponsible to pass the resolutions this evening, numbers 59, 60, and 62, without considering the backlash. I am also reminding you that casting these resolutions is playing politics, and it is not in the best interest of the residents of our city. I fear a spending pattern is imminent, and it is not acceptable. We can expect that bankruptcy is looming just around the corner. We are at a pivotal juncture right now. Our sales tax agreement has expired, and we will be held hostage by the county this time, not our Senate. The current proposal is to allocate 10% to the city. We stand to lose 1.1 million dollars. I ask you, how are we going to meet our weekly and monthly unfunded mandates? And as taxpayers, how are you going to protect our interests? Thank you.
Thank you. Does there anyone else that would like to address the Council at this time?
Thank you, Ellen DeFalco. I live at 66 Glen Street. And there are numerous things that I'd like to cover, but I'll start with the first, the fiscal responsibility. It's not fiscally responsible to interfere in a civil matter and you made it political. It was on the political platform of the mayor's campaign. And you heard him tonight, I... I wanted to end. Okay? Ending it without conclusion of the civil action is not fiscally responsible. In one of the statements, Ray's excuse was rejected for his criminal intent was established. Next, I'd like to discuss evidence. I think the new members of the Council, and maybe perhaps some of the old members of the Council, should get familiar with the transcript of the case between Dunn... I mean, Dunn, not Dunn, but Dunn, Quinn, and Perry, and against Redwill. I think it would be enlightening, you would find that under oath, people did not tell the truth. And they're sitting here in this room right now. I'm not going away. The sales tax, we were held hostage with the sales tax once before, when our illustrious assemblyman withheld the 700,000. And we may do now, we came up with a budget and stayed under the 2% tax cap. And Cahill's answer was, "You see, we don't need it. You've made that political, you've made the Ray's case political, you've made everything here political. It's not fiscally responsible to taxpayers in Kingston. And I'm going to come here every month, as well as I did six years before the prior administration took over." So I can enlighten a lot of you. I thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Very welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council at this time? Seeing no one else, I now declare the Public Speaking portion closed. We will now enter into the Majority and Minority speeches. Now, can you get that by yourself and get a hand? The Minority Speaker will have the third week show calling person. Minority Speaker, Deborah Brown.
Good evening, President of the Council, my fellow Council members, and to all of you here tonight. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to update the visions, issues, and pressing matters we face in the City of Kingston. After many long and late nights of coming up with a workable budget for the city, the Common Council passed it in December. A lot of blind items were discussed and debated. Department heads were interviewed and asked to make adjustments whenever possible. We were working with a lower tax cap requirement from Albany. This made the process more onerous, but so much needed for the city left on the table. Our wish list for the future now become urgent concerns for the present. As you are well aware, we have had an ongoing battle to keep our infrastructure functioning. Many anticipated failings, in addition to unexpected breakages, has put a strain on our finances and the employees directly involved. Last year, Kingston initiated an asset management as a tool to keep us informed and to draw attention to the life cycle of any given property and infrastructure in the city. A thorough analysis was done on all departments, and the way that inventory, needs, and wants of infrastructure matters, priorities were identified. Infrastructure continues to be one of our main focuses. We cannot let the past negligence be our future. We are striving to be proactive rather than active. This brings me to the subject of the sales tax revenue for the City of Kingston and the counties' attempt to usurp our portion. For many decades, Kingston has been the beacon for the poor, elderly housing, social services, and low-income housing. We have been sensitive to those needs, but these cost money. The taxpayers in Kingston had absorbed those bills via taxes on the city residents, taxes which had continued to rise as the needs became greater. In addition, we provided services to 33 county-owned buildings which are tax-exempt. Last year, the county in SUNY Ulster opened a campus at the former Sophie Finn School on Mary's Avenue. It was a great project, but it's also tax-exempt. Our tax proposal list grew as residents could not afford to pay the taxes. It was with relief to the city that the county took over the safety net costs and election expenses. We were finally able to start getting our head above the water. During those talks of transferring the cost, no mention was made of the county claiming a state to a bigger piece of the pie after the fact and going forward. And now they're asking us for a greater percentage of the sales tax revenue. I'm encouraging the county to realize the impact to the city if they want to break with the status quo of what has been in place for many years. If the city fails, so does Ulster County. I do have one question. If the finances of the county coffers need to be filled, why the salary increase for legislators, along with medical coverage? I know there will be problems at the county level that the raises are a small part of their budget. I say it's all about perception, it all adds up. The real estate market appears to be on the upswing in Kingston for the commercial parcels. Several of our commercial properties have sold in recent months. An exciting addition is a food emporium which is going into the old Wolfheart Building in Uptown. The new owners have spent millions in renovations preparing for the new vendors. This was a building that was languishing on the real estate market for many years, and now it stands to be a vibrant access to the Uptown businesses. The RUBCO project on Cedar Street is moving forward, which will encompass housing the lower and moderate income households. The lace mill factory building, once an eyesore, is now apartments to artists. They have been a welcome presence to the Midtown neighborhood. Along with the artists comes artist-related manufacturing. Within one block of the lace mill housing are other thriving businesses dedicated to the arts. Last year, I and several other council members took a tour of these facilities. I was totally amazed at the industry and how many people they employ, over 60, hopefully plus, more. We are grateful to the arts community for their contribution to our local economy and the enthusiasm they bring. Another business interested in Midtown Kingston is an indoor shooting range. Currently, it is an empty building. This is a unique idea, fills a niche. The owner, Dr. Sawyer, is in the process of a major renovation to accommodate his vision. It would be one of the first in our area in recent years. His customer base would be licensed gun owners. Law enforcement agencies would have access to the facility for required training and for maintaining their skills. With a police academy now located at the SUNY Ulster Campus on Mary's Avenue, this would be a welcome addition to their curriculum. We as a city cannot afford to discriminate against or discourage the entrepreneurial spirit. We should welcome new business with open arms. Let's not send a message that we are a difficult city to deal with when it comes to new economic growth. There are a lot of other cities who are vying for any kind of new businesses and economic development. We do not have the luxury of discouraging them from coming here with their innovative ideas. Other projects in the works is building a better roadway. Yes, it is a controversial project, but I am hopeful that all the concerns will be worked out in the ensuing years. It will be completed in stages. We have a major We have a major renovation going on at the Kingston High School campus, which is long overdue. The building was falling into disrepair after many years of neglect, which was due to budgetary concerns and the need to hold taxes down. It's finally come to the point where the problems will no longer be ignored or denied. Unfortunately, now it comes with a bigger price tag. The Kingston Green Line is moving forward with great anticipation. A lot of dedicated volunteer workers are making that a reality. And the same with the Catskill Mountain River, which unfortunately has seen its plans revised. No matter what side of the controversy you are on, there is no denying it has brought a stream of revenue and tourism to the county and to the city of Kingston. The traffic signals are now in place in Washington Avenue. And, my favorite, the Flatbush and Route 32 intersection. You no longer have to sit there for like 20 minutes waiting for the lights to turn. So that was great, that was done. The Washington Avenue signal is in the midst of construction, which hasn't been properly, but it is in progress. This speech would not be complete without thanking the fire department for their services. In recent years, our fire department has been participating in disaster training and acquiring the skills to protect the city against major disasters. One major disaster is on the rails and tankers that transport the vacuum crew oil through the heart of Kingston. With the possibility that a derailment of this car could cause a massive inferno, our fire department has devised in conjunction with Auster County and the state a response plan. In the past two years, our Kingston Fire Department has spent over 1,000 hours training for hazardous material emergencies, with a derailment being the worst-case scenario. This issue brings me to the next concern we as citizens face with outer, outside entities affecting our quality of life. I'm talking about the Pilgrim Pipeline. Recently, the common council unanimously enacted a moraling memorizing resolution against the pipeline. This project would transport oil, petroleum products, from New Jersey to Albany, New York. Pilgrim is currently going through the process of a permit and environmental approval, with New York State being, being one of the co-lead agencies for the environmental review. With obvious reasons, this is not a project in the best interest for Kingston. With an underground pipeline running alongside the thruway, and the gun barrel coming through the heart of the city, the most dangerous would be the vacuum crude oil. Currently, this oil is already being transported by rails through the city of Kingston. Why would we want to double our risk on the worst-case scenario, leakage with contamination, and major explosions upon our city? Brings new meaning to the saying "brings a fire." The building and safety divisions under the direction of Kingston Fire Department has done a fine job in addressing the code violations of structures within the city limits. We have seen how derelict buildings and neighborhoods bring down property values of surrounding homes, and this department has a task of abiding those concerns. DPW maintains our streets and infrastructures. We have a tendency to take them for granted, what we all know, who we call for a water or sewage line breakage, and how we leave we are, once they are repaired and back to service. And let's not forget the plowing, which we have been fortunate this year to be less of a task. Most recently, we have counted on the DPW workers to offset the cost of infrastructure repairs before we have to call in the big guns. A thank you to all employees of City Hall who do their jobs in keeping the city hall open and functioning for all of our residents. Kingston Police Department, along with the Sheriff Department, has had a daunting task in holding back the drug trade, which has made its presence in Auster County. We as citizens need to appreciate their service as they do things in the line of duty most of us put a core. To hire our heads in the sand and not acknowledge the heroin problem, the drug of choice, is foolhardy. I've had conversations with state legislatures and medical providers regarding these concerns. All recognize that the police unfortunately have to be in force of the law, medical provider, medical providers in the field with administering the antidote for drug overdoses, and act as social workers in addressing the drug and mental health issues of our citizens. This is unfair and not the right solution for our law enforcement agencies and to the victims of a drug and alcohol addiction. We have a problem, as we can see by the obituaries and news reports, our youth and young adults are dying from overdoses or accidents related to their addiction, and also suicide. Quite a few of the drug deaths go unreported just because of the nature of the death. I'm asking for a call of action from the county and city, starting with a major dialogue of all agencies involved, to combine resources to address this problem. Right now, we have several agencies and coalitions offering services, but they really do not connect to each other. We need a gatekeeper to inform, advise, and refer to the appropriate service or agency in a timely manner. The same can be said for our citizens in need of mental health services. We are fast approaching a crisis mode. We need more detox centers, sober living housings, inpatient and outpatient rehab facilities, and safe havens for our mentally ill. Not just evaluate, medicate, and release to the streets. Jail should not be the only option. Recently, the city of Ithaca is moving forward with an approach to drugs and drug policies that crosses new territories for their city, New York State, and the United States. The plan targets four areas: prevention, treatment, harm reduction, and law enforcement. It calls for methadone clinics, more Suboxone prescribers, and a law enforcement assisted diversion program known as LEAK. It is a culmination of a year and a half of work after the mayor convened a group of community experts and leaders. We are fortunate to have a local office of our senator for New York State here in Kingston. Senator Amador is chairman of the New York State Alcohol and Drug Task Force. I'm co-chair for the Heroin Task Force. Additionally, another Auster County, New York State Senator Jim Seward is the chair of the New York State Insurance Committee and a member of the Heroin Task Force. We need to have insurance companies pay for lawn care in our inpatient outpatient rehabs. Much like we do for cancer treatments, I can sometimes be endless depending on the diagnosis. Take away the stigma and the misconceptions of mental illness. At the same time, health insurance companies need and should be required to address the mental illness, health coverage, with more than a cursory glance at the problem. These are issues which in some cases causes the drug and alcohol addiction due to self-medication. With the expectation that Kingston Hospital might be closing, this would be a good time to cultivate and explore the idea of using it as a facility, either as a private or public entity, with the help from the state level. Not to be insensitive to this subject, but this would be, this would bring good jobs to Kingston, but you'd be helping to treat the addicts while at the same time bringing new careers and employment to the city. There's a great need for both. Lastly, on the subject, I urge all to contact or representation to the state and offer support for recent bills represented to the New York State in addressing these concerns. These bills originally were submitted last year and passed the Senate floor, only to die on the Assembly floor. Senator Amador once again reinduced them in January of this year. These package of bills were introduced to help decrease the heroin deaths and put more drug dealers behind bars for peddling dangerous opioids. It would have enhanced treatment options for opioid reviews. Collective voices need to be heard to convince Albany of this urgent matter. I would start with the Assembly and find out why it did not pass. I have a list of bills to read tonight, if anybody would like to see and read the details of each individual bill. Kingston is a city that does care for its citizens. We are a diverse city with many issues, but I am certain we all have our eyes on making the city great again. We have special interest groups that draw attention to the arts, the environment, economic business development, and quality of life issues. We will have debates and disagreements, which sometimes will be emotional, heartfelt, and seem impossible to overcome. I am certain that every one of us that ran for alderman because we want to make our homes safe, secure, and financially sound. We may disagree on how to get there, but we all have the same final destination in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair will now, I, the majority leader, William Carey, for the purpose of his majority speech. I'm missing you there.
I'll talk, Phil. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Debbie. Five years ago, when I decided to enter the world of city politics, I would have scoffed at the notion that I'd be standing here today in this capacity. It's an honor and a privilege, and I thank my fellow Democrats for the confidence you've shown in me and the support you've already given me. I'm truly grateful. I remember sitting there four short years ago, a not-so-young, but naive freshman alderman, listening intently to a seasoned political veteran, Majority Leader Tom Houghay, share his wisdom, and I remember thinking to myself, when is this speech gonna end? Alderman Houghay went on and on, most eloquently, I must admit, about the historical significance of the Democratic Party and the people who helped shape this great city and country. He rattled off so many names, many of, most of whom I never heard of. I think he even mentioned a linebacker from the Green Bay Packers just to make sure everyone was still paying attention. Though well-crafted, his speech did not have the impact on me that it should have or could have. As my time on the council rolls into a fifth year, I am more in tune to his message and how important it is to recognize and learn from our forefathers, and yes, mothers, whose thankless efforts have helped shape the party and this city into its current form. We learn from our mistakes so we don't repeat history, but I also think we need to be mindful of just how significant it is to be sitting in these seats, and what a privilege it is to represent this great city. It is truly an honor, and whether it is ancient history or recent history, it is imperative that we use all the building blocks available to lead us into a brighter tomorrow. With that in mind, I would like to thank former Mayor Shane Gallagher for his four years of service. He put his heart and soul into his job, and it would benefit all of us to focus on the good and to build upon the positive things he was able to accomplish or set in motion to move the city forward. I also would like to thank my predecessor in this role, former Alderman Matt Dunn, for his leadership and friendship. His tenure as Majority Leader was not without controversy and drama, as most of us don't. From my standpoint, I appreciate that Matt fought for us. He fought to preserve the power of the council and not take it for granted. Not just for the years he was here, but for the future as well. I hope God gives me the strength to fight for my convictions and for the convictions of the council, and have the stamina to get up the next day and do it all over again. Our role as a governing body should not be taken lightly, and we should all have the power to represent our constituents to its fullest extent that we can. I'd like to share a story that will bring us out of history and into the present. After a committee meeting this past fall, Matt and I had a discussion in the parking lot, as many of us often do. Sometimes I think we should hold committee meetings out there. Anyway, after 15 minutes or so of dialogue and laughs, we shook hands and parted ways. When I got home, it wasn't until I walked through my front door that I realized that everything Matt and I had talked about, we disagreed on. There were probably three issues, and we didn't see eye to eye on any of them, yet parted ways as friendly as ever, as though we were in complete agreement. Let's face it, we all have a different vantage point and different ideas, but the key is to have these disagreements without being confrontational or taking it personally. Sometimes the best thing we can do as a council is disagree. None of us are here to rubber-stamp proposals. Meaningful and significant changes often arise from conversations that may be uncomfortable at first. Debate between open-minded people is not only inevitable, but healthy and good government. Alderman Dawson has reportedly stressed solidarity on the council from the day she took office, and she is absolutely right. Solidarity, however, is not about agreeing all the time, but rather respecting each other, listening to each other, and working together for the overall good of the city. We owe it to each other to do this, and we certainly owe it to the people we represent. That said, I would like to make a request to each of you. I won't call it a requirement, but I will check and see how close we get to making this a reality. I would like every alderman to meet with every other alderman one-on-one sometime in the near future. It doesn't have to be extensive or lengthy, it could be before or after meetings, over coffee at someone's home, wherever, whenever. Our different backgrounds and agendas, or, excuse me, our wards are unique, and we represent people and businesses with very different backgrounds and agendas, yet there is a tremendous amount of common ground as well. I think if we all understood the specific needs of our colleagues constituents, we would not only have a better perspective of the city as a whole, but we will also get to know where each other is coming from, so where there are conflicting opinions, we will understand more fully why someone feels the way or the other. We accomplished some great things, oh, by the way, just to let you know, I'm serious, I made a little, a little chart, looks like the Super Bowl squares, which has everyone's name going across. So I'm gonna X off when people tell me that they've met with someone, so we can see. Is it $2 per square? Yeah, yeah, sure.
Eight laser walk-in.
Yeah, it'd be the laser tag one. We accomplished some great things in 2015, from the seemingly insignificant smaller resolutions such as removing a century-old bicycle registration fee of 25 cents, to a major charter change that provides a safeguard for the sale of water outside the city of Kingston. I am very proud to have been part of that historic change, because for me, that's how government works. Concerned citizens and elected officials worked hard together, and ultimately, it was left to the voters to enact this major change to protect our water supply. I believe we have positioned the city for a lot of positive changes going forward. Our introduction of an infrastructure asset management plan with both short and long-term goals is something long overdue. Our city departments have budgeted for capital projects, which is nothing new, but without a concrete game plan, the implementation of these projects lacks direction, particularly when it comes to paying for them. There are several key components to this plan, such as creating a spreadsheet that each department can use to develop and maintain an inventory of assets, and develop a risk-based prioritization scoring system, so we can determine which assets have the highest risk of failure at a given time. When we fully implement this plan, we will be better equipped to handle infrastructure problems, and better positioned to save and pay for future repairs in a proactive, not reactionary basis. If this is, if this was done decades ago, we wouldn't be in the crisis mode we are in now, with so many of our underground assets in need of overhaul. Another major and somewhat under-the-radar accomplishment in 2015 was the passing from our Economic Development Office to Brownfield Study for the entire waterfront. Too many projects and opportunities in the past have shown great promise only to reach an uncertain end because of, for economic reasons. Having the ability to clear this major hurdle in a universal way opens the door for development and economic opportunities. I look forward to working with developers who can utilize this valuable land to help drive the future economy of not just the waterfront, but the entire city. Clearly, the challenges facing us in 2016 are real and expensive, as Alderman Brown eloquently put. I want to thank the department heads for their efforts to continuously do more with less, and come to the table each year with a budget that is mindful of the taxpayers. I think we have done a great job keeping spending down despite uncontrolled, or I should say uncontrollable, and unexpected circumstances. I think we could do a better job of sharing services with other municipalities and the county, and I urge everyone to bring forth ideas to accomplish this. I think we also need to put a lid on overruns from projects that go beyond deadlines with the scope of what was originally projected. Strong and binding language needs to be written into contracts with consultants or outside engineering companies, because I for one am tired of having our hands tied and being left with no option because we are too far down the road to stop and turn back. We need to be, we need more accountability from all bidders, so Kingston knows that the price we agree on at the beginning of a project is the bill we will receive at the end of it. Obviously, there are exceptions, but it seems lately this has been the rule, and we need to take steps to change that. Another huge area of concerns are the two words I've been hearing for so long it has become like white noise: unfunded mandates. This timeless phrase becomes more than words. Simply put, more often than not, existing and new regulations from the state come underfunded or with no funding at all. This means we have to pay for, for them, and either raise taxes beyond reason, which for the most part, we have been able to avoid, or it means to take money from existing programs or elsewhere from our budget. An example of this is a health insurance number that appears annually in our budget. We can make a huge difference if we can find a way to get this number down significantly. And I'd like to see us make a strong effort to do this while obviously staying within the regulations that we are obligated to. The bottom line is we need to work with the state, but we need the state to work with us. It is crucial that the governor's office understand what we already know. Kingston could be the epicenter of economic development for the could be the epicenter of economic development for the entire state of New York. We are poised and positioned to change the landscape of this state, but we need the state to see this and invest in Kingston accordingly. Similarly, we are facing uncertainty within our own counties. Clearly, if Kingston can be the driving force of economic growth in New York State, it is imperative that our county leaders appreciate how critical Kingston is to Ulster County. I will see how the sales tax issue plays out, and hopefully, we will not be put in a position of desperation. I have faith that this will not happen, and we can all thrive together. The situation has been a warning shot, however, at the very least, and we need to seriously think about how we do business and how we can become more prosperous municipality without relying on outside money. I semi-joked a few years ago that I didn't like our $35 million budget, and I actually wanted to see our spending double. It raised a few eyebrows, but the follow-up was that I wanted to see our revenue triple. The vast majority of time spent at finance meetings deal with cutting, saving, spending, sharing services, et cetera. We don't spend nearly enough time talking about creative, new, and permanent ways of generating more revenue. Let 2016 be the year that we do that. Just like our personal finances, if you went to work tomorrow and your boss said they're tripling your salary, don't you think you would improve the quality of your life dramatically, and at the same time save money to have a significant emergency fund down the road? Of course you could, and that's what we need to do as a council for this city. This may be the most important thing you do in the next two years, to help come up with ways to increase revenue in Kingston and help give current taxpayers the much-needed relief they deserve. I truly believe the most important people in turning the financial fortunes of Kingston around are people we have not even met yet. People with money and ideas of all walks of life come to Kingston, and we need to figure out a way to keep them here and get them to move their families and businesses here, help create jobs, and redirect Kingston the way I know you all believe we can. We need to sell the vision and convince them to want to be part of the solution. I talked about hurdles that are being cleared on the waterfront. It is easy to see how development downtown can make a difference. We also have to keep our eyes and minds open to ideas that can add revenue but may not be so obvious or popular, such as the shooting range that has been proposed on Prince Street. I heard from a Kingston resident who firmly believes that an RV park at the Kingston Point should be explored, and I agree. This could be a great partnership and could also help provide assistance for the drainage issues down there. Alderman Mills, during discussions over banning plastic bags, brought the idea of trying to get a plastic recycling company to expand to Kingston, and what better place than the Kingston Business Park off Delaware Avenue? I look forward to working with Mary Ann to make this a reality. I also look forward to work with the newly-formed Art District to create more and stable business opportunities to Midtown. The linear park that Ulster County Executive Mike Hine has proposed to connect Kingston Plaza to the Strand can be a real game changer and will cost Kingston City taxpayers nothing. Now that the court has ordered the trains and contaminants to be cleared off the tracks of Cornell Street, this vision is within two years of becoming a reality. This will bring a tremendous amount of foot and bike traffic through the heart of Kingston. I expect this to open the door for a lot of new business opportunities along this path. I know it is complicated because there are multiple owners involved, but the landoff of Field Court in the middle of Kingston would be an ideal place for development. Maybe we can make something happen there, perhaps even bring in some businesses, like a men's clothing store. Where can we currently buy men's clothes within the city limits? Additionally, how about a kids' clothing store, a toy store, right there, walking distance, right in Midtown? Maybe a Chodos Museum. Then across Broadway, we saw the site of the former Kings End. Maybe the Art District can help tie in U-PAC and bring in a new exciting film-related business there. How about the former Uptown Parking Garage? Let's revisit that and see if we can get the state-of-the-art parking garage and shops and condos similar to what was proposed nearly a decade ago. That could be a serious game changer. And then there's the 350 acres of land, AVR. How can we make this a reality finally? Let's work with our neighbor, the town of Ulster, to bring 32 to the river with more restaurants, shops, and the continuation of a hiking trail on the Strand. These are just a few ideas, and they are merely the tip of the iceberg. The opportunities in Kingston are great. We just have to believe in it and sell it to the people who can share this vision. In closing, I don't expect us to look at Kingston through rose-colored glasses and be unreasonable in what we can accomplish. We certainly need to have a clear vision of what's wrong in order to fix problems. However, as a governing body, we do need to be positive. We need to lead from the front, and when everyone else says no, we need to be able to say yes. I believe in this council. I believe in this administration, and together, I firmly believe we can make Kingston the best place in New York State to live, work, and raise a family. I look forward to working with all of you, so when future aldermen take a historic look back, they say 2016 was a year that the fortunes of Kingston changed for the better forever. Thank you.
We will now go to the claims area to be the case. There are no discussion. I'll be on file in the motion office. I get a motion against the second meeting of the General Bill, I'm placing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bills are paid, nine zero. Now we're going to enter into the Court of Commits. Resolution number 43.
Resolution number 43 of 2016, ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the B schedule adopted by the Common Council of the City of Kingston.
Under question. There are no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now adopt the resolution number 41.
Resolution number 44 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Brinier and Larry O'SP C for topographic survey and base map of the Forsite Tennis Course, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Parks and Recreation Budget.
Under question.
President Nelson.
Alderman Nelson.
In speaking to the Science Committee, I don't sit on the Science Committee, however, I had the opportunity to cover for Alderman Brown while she was unavailable. And my vote at the committee meeting for this was a no, however, my vote this evening will be a yes. But let me explain why my vote was a no. The $45,000 that needed to complete this survey was being requested from the Recreation Trust Fund, and I questioned why this money wasn't being taken from the grant that had been through to the entire Forsite Park complex. It is, to my knowledge, that it's a spending bill grant, and therefore, I will be ensuring that it is taken from the trust fund and reimbursed through the grant process. Also, last night, caucus, I brought along the Parks and Recreation Capital Plan that 's posted on the city website, and I actually spoke with Alderman Shabat. There's many, many opportunities in that plan to move forward with. And in speaking with someone who's very vibrant in the tennis community, he wants to remain proactive, that these tennis courts don't get as eviscerated they are now, and I too agree with him. But I agree that our parks and recreation, all our parks, all our services, we need to stay on top of that capital plan and try to make things work. Yes, some of them need to be funded, and no, we may not have the funds. But there's a way, and there's a will, and there's a lot of volunteering within this community. And the tennis courts received a donation from Ron Woods of $20,000, and then the Tennis Association raised their own $20,000 through fundraising. And if that's the way that the city has to go to move these parks forward and the other facilities, I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Nelson and Alvin Carey.
Seems to be missing my microphone. I don't know if it helps any.
Get it real loud.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't, these kind of topics about volunteerism have been going on for years. I've been involved with the Rec Department for a lot of years. We'll say that. I'm gonna date myself here. The tennis court being no. I was on the Recreation Commission when we started talking about this several years ago. As Mary Ann said, there's been at least $40,000 that is sitting there, waiting for work to be done. It's kind of been going at a very slow pace. Here's a phase that we really need to implement to get it up to speed. We're hoping to get this done, so we can use the tennis courts this summer. So I'm looking forward to getting this passed. I hope everybody is in agreement. You know, we can get this work done and move on with the project. I think it's only gonna enhance the city, the park. It's gonna, it'll bring in revenue to the city. We'll get a lot of use out of the courts, and yes, we will be close tabs on everything going on. Make sure it's done. I have promises from the Mid Hudson Tennis Association. They will have a heavy hand in maintaining the court and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Alvin Carey.
Yeah, just wanted to, with what Alderman Mills discussed, I did talk to Captain Gilfeather today, and he assured me that the grant, there was a provision in the grant where you can pay back the $4,500 to the Rec Trust Fund, so that money can indeed be used to put that on the back. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Nelson.
I agree with Alderman Mills. I think this is a good start, and I like to think that we're gonna look at a lot of other parks and the conditions that they're in. I'm already addressing the pool house, and, you know, also walking around other parks like Academy Green, that they need attention. So I think this is a good start, and I'd like to see these courts brought back to Mid Hudson. I would encourage my fellow aldermen to also support this. Thank you.
Anyone else? If I call for the vote. Is there no one else? If you're gonna call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 45.
Resolution number 45 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the approved list of vehicles included in the 2016 capital plan.
Under question. There are no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now adopt the resolution number 46.
Resolution number 46 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Animal Control Budget.
Under question. President Alderman Nelson.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to committee.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second to refer back?
Second.
Okay, so this is under motion to refer back. Under question. There are no discussion. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is referred back, nine zero. We now adopt the resolution number 47.
Resolution number 47 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Funding Department Budget.
Under question. Alderman Nelson.
With the removal of the tree in front of the postal office or the client office there, we needed to replant a tree. As the name's on for the Tree Commission, I've met with the Tree Commission, and a tree is going to be planted in the Academy Green, which is also supported and sponsored by the Garden Club within the city of Kingston. While the tree will be replaced to someday be recognized as our holiday tree to decorate, our Charlie Craft tree will be decorated this Christmas, and the festivities can begin again at the Academy Green. And with that being said, there was a request last night from Alderman Dawson to inquire about the tree that was also placed on Henry and Broadway, and that's under, in fact, not investigation, but under review to have that done as well. And again, I went to, once again, thank the committee, or the council, for the 2015 budget that we placed $5,000 into the Tree Commission Fund, which will do great things with trees for the city of Kingston, and the Tree Commission greatly appreciates that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alvin Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say, in an effort to continue this solidarity thing we had going here, I want to say I appreciate that you're looking into that. We only discussed it last night, but that's how you work, Mary Ann. Thank you very much. It's amazing how interesting and how much education you can receive, not just as a person in the community, but as a councilperson. A tree means a lot in all areas, and I didn't realize how important that tree was at the end of Henry Street until this winter came. I remember talking about how horrible it looked in the past, but many people miss that tree being decorated, no matter how bad we thought it looked. So I appreciate you thanking everybody and making it inclusive. Thanks.
Anyone else on the question? President Alderman Nelson.
Again, thank you, Alderman Nelson. I think this was a good solution, and I'll say that with one caveat. When this tree was removed, the point of what the agreement was that a tree would be in place in close proximity or proximity. So you could say that the Academy Green is in proximity or not, but I think that the point I'm trying to make is that when a tree is removed from a city street, I'd like to see an effort made, you know, as we go down the road and use this fund that we, I think, very wisely funded for the Tree Commission, to recognize the value of the trees on these sidewalk streets as well, so we don't just remove them there and not keep an eye on keeping those replenished and a lot of those trees to grow there. It is pretty cool on Academy Green. There's some great trees there, and I think it's good to keep it on, and I'm happy there. I was just looking at a plaque that was from a tree that was planted in 1963 by the class of 1914, the original Academy. So maybe you could put a plaque on the tree, too. So anyway, I think it's, I fully support this solution, and hope that we can keep an eye on keeping all parts of the city with trees replanted as we replace the ones that maybe shouldn't have been planted in the first place because they're maybe inco trees and they drop and they stain. So we'll put the right trees in next time. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? There are no one else, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 48.
Resolution number 48 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 General Fund Budget.
Under question. There are no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 49.
Resolution number 49 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 General Fund Budget.
Under question. There are no debate. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to the resolution number 50.
Resolution number 50 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 General Fund Budget.
Under question. There are no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Just for future information, if there's ever like a bunch that you're gonna disvote...
We had started earlier.
That's okay. But just for the ones that don't know, you can vote in a block. It just saves time for each one in the debate. Just point of thought. Now move on to resolution number 51.
Can we do it for the sewer fund charges, since there's a block on the way?
Yes, once you're related.
So I, I would like to retest that, and I just wanted to bring back the memory that Alderman Zier would have requested... Seer would have requested those in a block.
So that would be resolution number 51, 52, 53, and...
That's it. 54. No, that's...
3. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Yes.
Okay. No fouls.
Tyler, please.
Resolutions 51, 52, and 53, all reading Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Sewer
Oh, okay. Just for your information, the vote you cast will be for those three resolutions, number 51, 52, and 53. On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolutions are adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 54.
Resolution number 54 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2015 Civil Service Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution 55.
Resolution number 55 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, supporting the passage of the State Stacking for Quality Care Act.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 56.
Resolution number 56 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting the Comprehensive Plan as amended.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. And as council president, thank you very much. It was a lot of effort put into this, so hopefully it'll work well. Now move on to resolution number 57.
Resolution number 57 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the sale of 39 Van Buren Street, tax map number 56.93-2-20, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question. Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say, I was thinking whole school when I saw this on the agenda. Back in the day, we used to do, we used to bring in banks. We used to have bank reps come in and explain to people that had no idea how to go about getting a mortgage, what the requirements were. We used to have meetings once a month, once every six months, to teach people how to become homeowners. And I was thinking of doing this, and when I, as I see these properties in Ward 4 come up for sale, I think it's time to go whole school and start having more of these meetings with bank reps coming in, explaining how, what the process is to become a homeowner. So I'd just like to say, like, I'm very happy to see Van Buren Street on this agenda, because there was a time and place where people didn't even want to go on that street, so good to see. Whole school.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 58.
Resolution number 58 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, supporting the Greenway Community Grant Program.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 59.
Resolution number 59 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing settlement of Christopher Ray lawsuit and adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of $105,000 to settle the Christopher Ray lawsuit.
Alderman.
Good, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Corporation Council, Mr. Ray's attorneys, for negotiating this agreement. But I feel that isn't good for, not only for the city, but for Mr. Ray. As some of you may know, I was a former firefighter for the city, and at that time, C. Ray was my assistant chief then and after. So I ask that everyone here on the council tonight take this opportunity to restore C. Ray back to his position as assistant chief by voting yes for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Schadet.
Thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity, this is, I'm not representing the council here. I'd like to thank the mayor and anyone else who moved this forward. I think this is an issue that we are well advised to put behind us. I'm happy with the deal that was struck. I think, I think it's a win-win. I think we really came out, tell you the truth, I was prepared for something worse. I think this was fair. I'd like to thank Corporation Council for getting it done. For us to move forward, I think is important, as it's been on everybody's minds, I'm sure on the council, in the public, throughout the city. I think we're well served to get rid of it. I'm sure the Ray family is happy that it's over. I can't even imagine the strain that's been on them for the last couple of years. This is very tough, and to their credit, they are still together as a family. I think this is an issue that would have torn a lot of families apart. I'm happy to put this behind us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Kevin Bryant, the Corporation Council, for their work on this. And I think it's safe to say that this is not a financial loss to the city. If this settlement was not reached when it was, I think it would have just continued to be an albatross for us, and I appreciate your efforts and the effort of the mayor to get this done. Now we can have closure and move on. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Coop.
Mr. President, this has been a terribly elongated situation for which it's imperative to have big closure. This is the right thing to do, and we need to get it done. Thank you.
I echo Michael of Alderman's intent, wanting to look forward and nub back. I thank our Corporation Council and the mayor for their hard work on this. I personally can't say if this is fair, but I can say that it's the right solution, and I do think that by passing this, we will be able to close a chapter and focus on the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to resolution number 60.
Resolution number 60 of 2016, An Ordinance Authorizing the Payment of a Settled Claim by the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $105,000, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $105,000 bonds of said city to pay the costs thereof.
This is long... Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Will?
Aye.
Alderman Dawson?
Aye.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Schadet?
Yes.
Alderman Brown?
Yes.
Alderman Ackert?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to the resolution number 61.
Resolution number 61 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Hudson River Cruises and Events Inc.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move on to the final resolution, number 62.
Resolution number 62 of 2016, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2016 Fire Department Budget.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted, nine zero. That concludes our meeting before it's over this evening. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, if there are any others who wish to address the president at this time. Means everybody is a little while out there.
Motion to adjourn.
Take it a second?
A second.
All in favor? Opposed. We hear why. Stand adjourned for the next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.